That is the council meeting for June 18th, 2018, and call upon Councilmember Mark McGough.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I ask at this point if everyone would please join me in a moment of silent reflection. And now, please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kristen Rush, if you'll call roll.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Piper.
Present.
Councilmember Corr.
Here.
Councilmember Jones. Councilmember McGough.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
I need a motion with regard to Mr. Jones. Thank you, Ms. Marriott.
Yes, I move that we excuse Mr. Jones.
Motion to excuse. Now, if I let you all vote. All votes are cast. That passes six to zero with Mr. Jones being an approved absence. Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the minutes of the June 4th city council meeting and the June 5th executive session. Are there any changes, corrections? Seeing none, they will stand approved as submitted. Next, we have recognitions and communications, and we're going to call upon Councilmember Mark McGough for this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my honor this evening to issue a, to read a proclamation of recognition of Margaret Agnew, Silver Sneakers Instructor of the Year. Margaret, would you come down to the podium as I read this? By way of introduction, Arvada resident Margaret Agnew has been named the Silver Sneakers Instructor of the Year for 2018. She was selected from more than 600 instructors nominated from across the nation. She's been teaching seniors in the Silver Sneakers program for many years. Currently, Margaret teaches nine different Silver Sneakers classes at Apex Community Recreation Center. The chief executive officer of the Silver Sneakers program will be presenting her award at the Apex Community Center tomorrow. Proclamation reads as follows. Good evening, Margaret. Whereas for 26 years, the Silver Sneakers program has provided a comprehensive fitness and wellness program for seniors and currently provides the program in 14,000 locations throughout the nation. And whereas Margaret Agnew has been a fitness instructor in Arvada for 34 years and a credentialed instructor in the Silver Sneakers program in Arvada, primarily with the Apex Park and Recreation District for 14 years. And whereas Margaret Agnew has conducted an average of nine classes per week with as many as 80 women and men in a class, encouraging and inspiring hundreds of our Arvada senior citizens to lead active and healthy lives. And whereas the Silver Sneakers program invites nominations for instructor of the year from its many locations throughout the nation. And whereas, following her nomination by her class members and qualifying as a finalist, Margaret Agnew was named the USA Silver Sneakers Instructor of the Year. And whereas Silver Sneakers officials will present the award at a ceremony at the Apex Community Center tomorrow, June 19th, 2018. Now, therefore, the mayor and the city council of the Arvada, of the city of Arvada, Colorado, congratulate and honor Margaret Agnew for being named the United States, or the USA Silver Sneakers Instructor of the Year for 2018. I'll bring down a copy of this proclamation, and I'm hoping that someone here would want to take a picture of Margaret and me together.
[laughing]
As I bring this down, and you're welcome to come forward of the, of the speaker's platform.
Yeah, you can come down here, no problem.
I just wanted to thank the city council for this. I really appreciate it. My husband and I, we've lived in Arvada for 43 years. We raised our four children here. We love living here. There's a lot of recreational activities, and we really enjoy it here. I really love the Silver Sneakers program. I'm a Silver Sneakers myself, and I keep telling my class members, we're here in this together. We, if we don't use it, we're going to lose it. So, we're trying to stay as healthy and as strong as we can. I really appreciate the Silver Sneakers program and what it does and provide. And I'm grateful for Apex. I really enjoy working for Apex Park and Recreation. And I do teach nine Silver Sneakers classes, but I also teach a total of 15 a week, the other classes, or not specifically Silver Sneakers, but they're for seniors, and I really enjoy those class, those classes also. But I want to thank my family for being here, and I thank my, some of my class participants. They're wonderful people. I enjoy working with the seniors. They inspire me, and they, I hope that I can help them anyway. And like I said, we're in this together, so thank you so much, City Council. Thank you for Apex. Thank you for Silver Sneakers, and I appreciate this a whole lot.
Great, congratulations. Okay, we're going to take a break and do some calisthenics, and then we'll get back to you. We do have some people signed up for public comment. Mindy Moore, if you'd like to lead us on.
Mindy Moore, M-O-H-R, and being a Silver Sneaker person myself practically here, I wanted to just let you know some exciting news about an Arvada housing resource fair that'll be coming up September 29th. It's a Saturday morning. I'm really thankful to Lori Gillis and the city staff that have been working with us on preparing for this. It will be helping Arvada's low to moderate income residents learn about existing programs that can help them and existing opportunities that's related to housing. And, you know, 30 to 50% of your constituents are in that income category, and especially seniors, and this will help educate them. This is some information that will be in the next Arvada report about the housing fair to help low to moderate income homeowners who might need financial help with essential home repairs, renters who need assistance locating affordable rent or housing assistance and understanding fair housing requirements, current homeowners who may be interested in building an accessory dwelling unit on their property. This could be anywhere from low to moderate income Arvada residents who may want additional rental income from ADU or a place for their aging parents to live, senior homeowners who may want financial assistance with aging in place, those interested in home sharing, matching of seniors with younger people who can help with some basic chores in exchange for affordable housing, and first-time home buyers who may need financial assistance with their down payment or understanding the home buying process. In addition to city staff that will be there answering questions on these programs and how to build ADUs, we've lined up a number of other organizations throughout the area that will come and have tables. So, again, I'm really excited about this. I think this will be a great help for many of your constituents, and wanted to ask if the city council members will, will help promote this. As, as you talk to your constituents, you know, if something that you hear about this would help them, let them know about the housing fair using your Facebook or other social media pages outreach, just to let them know we care about everybody in Arvada. And as we develop flyers and more promotional materials, we'll be sharing those with you. We're still three months away, but thank you.
Thank you. You know, we will certainly promote this because one of the things we hear about most in addition to the condition of our roads and congestion is the need for attainable and affordable housing. So, this is great that you're working with us and our city staff in terms of letting people know what options are out there. So, we really appreciate your work on this.
We thank you and Arvadans for progressive action. Thank you.
You bet. Okay, next, I've got several people who are going to speak on behalf of the Sustainability Advisory Committee. So, if whatever order you all want to go in is fine by me, if you've got a prepared presentation or how you want to do it.
Thank you. My name is Steve Nixon. I'm on the Arvada Sustainability Advisory Committee. We are trying to give you some good background information on the benefits of recycling. Today, we're going to talk about the economic benefits of recycling. Just a couple of reminders, I think you got a little briefing about a month ago on Arvada's current state of recycling. We are one of the lowest recycling communities in the Front Range. I think out of 18 communities, we're third from the bottom. That's, I don't think that's a place where any of us want to be. We only recycle about 13% of our waste, which is even less than the Latin, than, much less than a national average of 35%. Only about 40% of Arvada residents have curbside recycling services. That means 60% of us do not. That's a big piece of why our recycling rate is so low. As, as a state, we throw away about $265 million worth of recyclable materials. That's aluminum, metals, cardboard, paper, and plastics. That's a lot of economic waste that we have in our community. When we have, those materials could become resources to use to manufacture new, new One of, one of the benefits is not just the value of the materials, but there's a whole economic system that's associated with collecting and distributing those materials. It, it goes to a hauler first, and then that goes to a material recycling facility, which I think a few of you visited one of those with us last year. Those materials then are separated and processed and shipped to various recycling material, recycling facilities. Some are local, some are far away, but we would, the more recycling we can do locally, the more likely we can get some processors local. I'm going to turn this over to Randy Mormon, who's going to add some more information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Again, my name is Randy Mormon on the Arvada Sustainability Advisory Committee, and I spoke to you about a month ago, and just wanted to add a couple of things as we focus in on the benefits of recycling to our economy. One stat that I think is really important to highlight is that recycling creates nine times more jobs per ton than landfilling. And I think we can look here at sustainability as an organization that is here in the city of Arvada that's benefiting from that already. And it also, they provide a social benefit too, in that they are employing individuals with intellectual and development disabilities. So, that's an extra benefit we get from recycling as well here locally. John Lehrer from Momentum is going to speak to you in a second about another industry that has moved in, into the area and is creating jobs and bringing more economic benefit to us. At the state level, we look at recycling, reuse, and remanufacturing industries, and they contribute about 8.7 billion to our economy annually. And that's with Colorado's low recycling rate. So, there's a lot of material out there that we're not capturing that's being landfilled, and if we do capture that, we could see some great growth happening here in the state and even here in Arvada. And I just want to finish by focusing on that, that, that stat about 60% of Arvadans not having a recycle bin at the curb is, is a huge detriment to this. And if, we cannot capture that material and reap the economic benefits of it if we're not capturing it at the curb. And so, that is something that we really look forward to working with you on and increasing our recycling rate here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm John Lehrer. I'm owner and president of Momentum Recycling. We're based in Salt Lake City, Utah. We're a glass recycling specialist. About two years ago, we opened a new state-of-the-art glass recycling plant here in the Front Range area. We process about 5,000 tons of waste glass every month. Most of that glass is refined and turned back into beer bottles at the Rocky Mountain Bottle Company and to mostly Miller Coors products that you enjoy. So, the more of that that we can get, that's one of the surprises we had coming here was access to the recycling infrastructure, as Randy just discussed. It was a bit surprising to us that in some communities, the access to recycling infrastructure is so low. That 5,000 tons a month is surprisingly not a profitable level. It needs to be greater. And so, for us, we employ 15 people in this plant, and we contribute our fair share of taxes, for sure. And so, to keep a business like ours healthy and to attract other businesses like ours for other commodities, we need more volume. That's kind of the biggest issue with a processor like us, whether it's glass or aluminum or cardboard or any other of the commodities of value in the recycling stream, volume is critical. The equipment's expensive. You really need an economy of scale to make it work. So, to address the issue of the low access to recycling at the curb in the community is really to be commended, and I would encourage you to continue to do so. It's going to increase the success of businesses like ours, and it's going to attract more of them, and it's going to drive more economic benefit to the area. So, I want to thank you for your work in this area and encourage you to keep striving for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public that would like to address city council at this time? Yes, sir. You'll come on down. State your name and...
Hello, I'm Cole Sandow, and this is my son Jake Sandow.
Hey, Jake.
We'd like to talk just briefly about the proposed replacement to the Myers Swim Pool. So, we thought we'd share a bit of a story, I guess, of myself and my son. So, I'm an alumni of the North Jeffco Swim Team, and Jake is currently a member of the team. And we thought it'd be good to share a little bit about the lessons at least it taught me and the results that that's been able to bring back to our community, and then Jake would like to talk for a few minutes about what he's learning from the swim team. I first joined the North Jeffco Swim Team when I was seven years old. I learned how to swim just down the road at the old outdoor swim pool. Ended up becoming a pretty good swimmer when I was 10. I won my first four state championships. When I was 12, I set a goal for myself to make top 16 cutoffs, which was top 16 swimmer in the nation. Got really close that year to making it, and I missed it by one one-hundredth of a second in the 100 breaststroke. And I was, I won the 100 breaststroke by open water and was furious at myself, moved out of my house and into the backyard and slept in a tent for two days. And I didn't, I didn't understand how I could have done everything and still missed my goal, but I realized that I'd missed something and that somehow, everything always mattered. Every effort, every practice, every way you prepared, and that I missed something that caused me to miss that, right? And there was some element of learning how to work hard to achieve that goal. And the next year, I really focused on it and really, really applied myself like I'd never had before, and was fortunate to be selected to the U.S. Olympic developmental team in swimming that year, and was really able to focus myself and got exposed to some wonderful individuals and had tremendous success. And I learned then that it's the work ethic that I learned in the pool that really, really has stayed with me over life. And I guess, why is that important? And why is it important to make sure we continue to be able to have that experience for other young people in this community? Is that after college, I was able to come back to Colorado, and I started my own company, the Optera Group, and was able to grow that into a multimillion-dollar professional services company. We ended up focusing on using advanced technologies to help education and particularly medical education. I was able to sell that company, actually in March of this year, to another organization called Health Scholars out of Illinois, who has subsequently moved that organization from Illinois to Colorado, and I'm now chief commercial officer of that organization. We're actually focused on bringing virtual reality education into medical education and simulation to really make medical providers a lot more effective at their jobs. And the only reason we were able to pull that off is I saw a goal, and I saw an ability to do that, and I knew it could happen if I worked hard and applied myself to make that vision a reality. And what I've learned is nothing has been more difficult than when I learned how to swim hard. And the lessons I learned through swimming have allowed me to really push forward on that. And that's really kind of just allowed so many great things to happen to me in life. And another way that that's been able to help us and help our community is, three weeks ago, we were actually awarded a $600,000 grant by the National Institutes of Standards and Technology to advance the use of virtual reality training for public safety organizations. And we've been able to actually partner with Arvada Fire and EMS as a consultant on that to help bring that technology forward back directly into this community. And everybody thought I was nuts for applying for the grant too, but again, through hard work and focus, we're able to start to make these innovations a reality and bring them back in. And I really, really see the, the lessons I learned in the pool of helping that, and just wanted to share that. And I know Jake wants to say a few words about his experience in swimming as well.
You're good. Jake, pull that microphone right down there. And you can take it off that stand if you want, or however works best for you.
Give that a shot.
My name is Jake, and the first time I ever gotten water was when I was three months old, and I started swimming on the team when I was seven, and I'm starting to feel that the pool's getting a little old because my dad has been swimming in it since he was 40.
Ouch.
Forty years ago.
Forty years ago.
So, um, it makes it feel pretty old, and, um, a new pool might help keep all that stuff going and make it so all these other kids have a chance to have that happen, and that might grow our economy, economy, um, helping people get jobs and making these, um, jobs much safer. And making these kids allow them to do better in school so they can get better jobs and have nice homes.
Great job.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks for coming. I can tell you that city council is going to be meeting with representatives from the school board coming up on June 28th to have some additional discussions with regard to Myers Pool. We recognize that it is certainly coming to the end of its current useful life, and we've, I've heard from a lot of people, including a sitting Colorado Supreme Court Justice whose, whose kids came up through the programs there, and, and just how important it is to, to have that facility. So, we recognize the need, now we just got to figure out how to do it. So, thank you all for being here and sharing your story. Anybody else like to address city council tonight? Very good. I'll move on then to new business. We have a few items on the consent agenda tonight. First is R. 18056, which is a resolution authorizing the issuance of a purchase order in the amount of approximately $157,000 with Hanen Equipment Company for the purchase of one 2018 John Deere 544K2 High Lift Loader. I've always been told that John Deers are so expensive because of that green paint they use. Then, then we have R. 18057, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a purchase order in the amount of approximately $258,000 with Red Sky Solutions, a predecessor company, for the purchase of Ruckus Core Fiber Router Equipment. Next, we have R. 18058, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a blanket purchase order in the amount of approximately $461,000 with L.L. Johnson Distributing Company for the purchase of turf maintenance equipment. Then we have R. 18059, a resolution adopting the amended street degradation fee for general public improvement permits pursuant to Chapter 78 Public Improvements of the Arvada City Code. And then finally, R. 18060, a resolution accepting a water line easement from the Kenneth W. Hodgkiss and Roy R. Hodgkiss Trust pertaining to the Purple Zone 18-inch PVC water main loop installation. Do I have a motion? Mr. Pfeifer.
I move to approve the consent items R. 18-056 through R. 18-060 be approved.
Motion for approval of the consent agenda, all votes are cast. That passes six to zero with Mr. Jones being an excused absence. Next, Mr. Devon, we've got a couple of resolutions.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The council, the first resolution, Resolution R. 18061 is a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement titled Police Recruit Training Agreement between the city of Arvada and the city of Lakewood to allow for training police recruits over a period of five years. This agreement, this IGA, is substantially the same as we have brought to you before for basically each recruiting class that we take through this regional recruitment academy. What has been done here through the good work of the chiefs of our respective police agencies and the city attorney's office is to put together an IGA which will allow for a, basically a standing, a standing framework for having the police recruits go through the recruit, the regional recruit, recruit academy, and authorizes the chiefs to basically negotiate the costs on a, on a case-by-case basis or a class-by-class basis, which will allow for the streamlining of the processing of getting recruits trained and through the academy and make it a lot, a lot quicker and a lot more seamless than it's been in the past. So, therefore, as a result of the good work that the chiefs and, and our city attorney's office has done, we recommend approval of the resolution.
Okay, any questions or action by city council? Ms. Ford.
Be willing to make a motion if there are no other questions. I move that R. 18-061, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement titled Police Recruit Training Agreement between the city of Arvada and the city of Lakewood to allow for training police recruits over a period of five years be approved.
Motion for approval. Let you guys in to vote. All votes are cast. That passes six to zero with Mr. Jones being an excused absence. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the, the next resolution is Resolution R. 18062, a resolution accepting an Adams County Open Space Grant Award from the Board of County Commissioners of the county of Adams in the amount of $1,647,265 for the Tennyson Complete and Connected Corridor project. And this is very much a good news item. Our staff successfully applied for a grant of that amount, which they received from the Adams Open Space Advisory Board. It will go towards a nearly $2.45 million project, which will add, require us to add about $823,000 to the, to the amount in order to put together a project for the Tennyson Corridor. This project will include multiple types of connections for active transportation along the corridor. Sidewalks will be constructed where there are none currently existing. Existing sidewalks will be widened and improved to meet current city standards. We will provide ADA standard crossings for existing pedestrian areas. There will be a pedestrian bridge, a bridge that will be constructed over Clear Creek to get to the Clear Creek Trail. The vehicular travel lanes will be narrowed and pavement will be widened to allow for continuous strip bike lanes, and the bike lanes will also include a buffer where the street width allows. This will improve access to east of, east of Sheridan Gold Strike Transit Station, and also a number of recreational amenities along the Tennyson Corridor, which I know the council is familiar with, such as Clear Creek Trail, Clear Creek Valley Park, the ponds, the wildlife areas, the Jim Baker Reservoir, et cetera, as well as the early College of, of Arvada and Tennyson Elementary School. This was another, another great collaboration with our, among the different departments within our organization, primarily our, our Public Works Department, Traffic Engineering, our streets, excuse me, our Bike and Pedestrian Coordinator, our Parks and Open Space Staff all collaborated to get this grant, to make this a successful grant. We announced it earlier when we had won the grant. Now, this is the agreement that will allow us to accept it and then to go forward and put the project together, and we recommend approval of the resolution.
Very good. Mr. Pfeifer.
I have a question, and I'll also make the motion if there's not any other questions. The first question is, does this address any of the issues that Adams County Commissioner Steve brought up, Ordericio, regarding flooding on the streets?
It, it gets us a start.
Gets us closer.
Yeah. Because the Tennyson improvements will include some infrastructure that will include drainage, what, what Councilmember Pfeifer is referring to is we have some, some drainage issues in this corridor that when we have a pretty significant rain, we will have some pretty significant localized flooding along various sections of the street, which can obviously cause problems with pedestrian movement, vehicle movement, et cetera. This project will help us in terms of providing some additional drainage infrastructure to the area that is being affected. It doesn't go far enough to, to resolve the entire problem. However, we are going to work with Adams County and with CDOT and, and others, Highland Hills Park and Recreation District to make some additional improvement. And then we also have a drainage improvement called the Tennyson Outfall Project, I think that's programmed in 2020 or 2021 in our CIP. So that, that I think will be able to improve the conditions there.
I think just having the sidewalks and drainage will probably lighten up the load on that, uh, that standing water, so, no, it sounds good. One step closer. If there's not any other questions, I'll make the motion.
You may proceed.
Okay. I move that Resolution 18-062, a resolution accepting an Adams County Open Space Grant Award from the Board of County Commissioners, County of Adams County, in the amount of $1,647,265 for the Tennyson Complete and Connected Corridor Project be approved.
Motion's for approval. All votes are cast. That passes six to zero with Mr. Jones being an excused absence. Great work by staff. This, you know, when we get these opportunities, I think our staff does a terrific job of, of really working hard to be able to maximize the dollars that can come in to address local issues and bring benefit to our citizens. So, Mr. Devon, if you'll thank folks for us, we'd appreciate it. Next, Mr. Marriott, first reading?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that Council Bill 18-027, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Section 62-39 Criminal Mischief of Article II Miscellaneous Offenses of Chapter 62 Offenses of the Arvada City Code be approved on first reading, ordered published in full, and a public hearing set for July 2nd, 2018 at 6:30 PM.
Motion's for approval on first reading. All votes are cast. That passes six to zero with Mr. Jones being an excused absence. Thank you. Next, we have a couple of public hearings. Open the public hearing on Council Bill 1802-5, an ordinance amending Section 26-33 Definitions and Section 26-38 Powers of Chapter 26 Civil Emergency, Emergency or Local Disaster. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The purpose of this ordinance is to further define civil emergencies and local disaster definitions in Section 26-33 of the code and incorporate cyber attacks and breach of data language. And then the second addition is to add language, or second change is to add a language that would direct how to cease operations of the city's organizational computer systems in the event of a cyber attack. Essentially, what occurred here is we have noticed some of the attacks that have occurred on, on public agencies. There's been attacks in, in various cities here in Colorado throughout the nation, and we have noticed that, and that caused us to look very closely at our own ordinance and our own internal processes and procedures. And as a result of that, we came to the conclusion, and this was jointly discussed with our resilience emergency preparedness coordinator and our information technology staff, city attorney's office, came to the conclusion that we needed to really incorporate language in our ordinance that would provide some ability for us to react in a, in a more nimble way to cyber attacks. As an example, the current ordinance does not address cybersecurity threats, and therefore, in the city manager's role as the emergency operations director, he or she would not have the authority to implement actions to adequately respond to these threats. Now, would, would we adequately respond to the threats? Yes, but we wouldn't have the authority to do so, so there's some risk for us doing that. So as a result, this ordinance would authorize the city manager to temporarily order a shutdown of the city's technology system in the event of a cyber attack in order to contain and mitigate the threat. And we've, this is something frankly that we're training on and working on as an organization. In fact, I sent out an email to the entire organization today about, which unfortunately all of you will have to do as well, but if you, if you need any help, let me know. I'll, I'll get somebody to help you, it won't be me. But the, the, the fact is, is that this is something that's now, that is something we have to deal with and put resources and time into. Chris, do you want to add anything? So, again, the city attorney's office, as they always do, has helped us to write this ordinance, and, and we recommend approval of the ordinance.
Very good. Any member of the public like to address City Council on this issue? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. City Council, questions or action? Mr. McGough, you're first.
Yes, thank you. I have a question for City Attorney, Mr. Daly. In looking quickly at the ordinance, proposed ordinance, it seems like the only change is in the paragraph headed by "local disaster," and that's just adding the words "cyber attack, comma, breach of data."
That's, that's one of the, that's one of the changes, and then the other change is within subsection, subsection X, which is on page four, which talks about, which the city manager already addressed, which talks about the city manager being able to order the operations be ceased for the city computer system, the organization's computer system, for purposes of conducting a forensic analysis of such systems and isolating a cyber attack data breach. So those are the two changes, the definition, and then what, what, what power the city manager has to, to direct how to, how to deal with that issue.
Okay, so in the definition of "local disaster" and in paragraph X.
Correct. Those are the two changes.
Thank you.
Ms. Ford?
I was going to make a motion if there wasn't any.
There are no other lights?
If there weren't other questions.
You may proceed.
I move that CB 18-025, an ordinance amending Section 26 through 33 Definitions and Section 26 through 38 Powers of Chapter 26 Civil Emergency, Emergency or Local Disaster be approved on final reading numbered 4643 and ordered published by title only.
Mr. Pfeifer?
I just want to make a comment to this resolution. Thank you, staff, for thinking broader. I think it's taking, I think a lot of governments, local municipalities, even state, have, haven't fully digested what this means, and I appreciate the fact that we're trying to be a little bit ahead of this, because I know this sounds little, but being where I work and going through it, it was a very disruptive and could be a crisis many times, and I don't think people really realize that. So again, I, I appreciate us being in the front of this and staying focused on it, so thank you.
Okay, all votes cast. That passes six to zero. Thank you. Next, I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 1802-6, an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement among the City of Arvada, City of Aurora, Town of Bennett, City of Brighton, the City of Commerce City, the City of Federal Heights, the Town of Lock Buoy, the City of Northland, the City of Thornton, the City of Westminster, and Adams County, for an Adams County Collaborative Transportation Planning Agreement to establish the Adams County Council of Governments AdCog Subregional Forum process. Mr. Devon?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll make a couple of comments, and then I'll yield some time to Councilmember Bob Pfeifer as our Dr. Cog Board Representative. This agreement represents a very significant change in the how, in the way Dr. Cog will be in the future allocating transportation improvement program funds throughout the region. And this IGA will pave the way for the Adams County subregion and, and that process, and then we'll be bringing back another agreement for the Jefferson County subregion. And with that, I'll invite Mr. Pfeifer to make a few more comments.
I had all sorts of thoughts there. I was like, should I take you through the trip, like Willy Wonka going into the tunnel, you know? Or do we want to just get straight to the chase of what we're doing?
Yes.
So, the Board of Directors at Dr. Cog, as many of you know, and I think the public is needing to know now, is when we used to do our TIP funding, our Transportation Improvement Plan funding, the Board of Directors would submit and ask for everyone to submit your projects, and we would vote on it. Well, the issue became is, we felt it was too of an aggressive process, so we have now pushed the TIP decision-making to what we call the subregions, which are really based in the county areas. This is one of two. We'll see one for Jefferson County coming up here soon. So, the Board of Directors did agree and voted on this new approach. We're going to be, we're really the only front, or only region that, in the United States that have done this. So, the closest one is the Putra Sound out of Seattle that has something similar, but we've given more autonomy to the subregions to really kind of pick two things. One, they get to pick a regional project, and it has to be, when we say regional, it has to be something of multiple impacts to multiple subregions. Usually, it's a, a larger project. There's only $20 million there. In this particular subregion, I believe we have $24 million or $25 million that can be used for projects that are within the subregion boundaries. So, right now, we're, we're processing how we can, how that will work, how projects are submitted. Once we decide on the projects we want to submit forward, we send it to the board, and then it gets approved. So, this is a whole new process of transportation funding for the Front Range, and we're still kind of learning. Each subregion can do it differently, so that's a little challenging right now, is Adams County's doing it a little bit differently than Jefferson County. They are in contrast, so at the end of the day, hopefully, it's better local control and more funding for local projects.
Very good. Any member of the public that would like to address City Council on this issue? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for City Council questions or action. Mr. Pfeifer?
Can I, can I make the motion?
Sure.
All right.
Of course you can.
It's a long one. I move that Council Bill 18-026, an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement among the cities of Arvada, the City of Aurora, the Town of Bennett, the City of Brighton, the City of Commerce City, the City of Federal Heights, the Town of Lock Buoy, the City of Northland, the City of Thornton, the City of Westminster, and Adams County for an Adams County Collaborative Transportation Planning Agreement to establish the Adams County Council of Governments AdCog Subregional Forum Process be approved on final reading number 4644 and ordered published by title only.
Motion's for approval. All votes are cast. That passes six to zero. Mr. Pfeifer, I want to thank you for your hard work. I think you bring some real expertise, and your involvement in leadership at Dr. Cog and your involvement with both of these subareas, I think, is really going to bring us great success in the future. So, thank you on behalf of the citizens of Arvada. We've always been blessed by people on this council who go the extra mile, be it at, at CML, be it at National League of Cities, be it at Dr. Cog and other groups that, you know, we recognize that we have to take care of what goes on within our boundaries, but cooperating in regional efforts to really benefit Arvada, the region, and the state have, have really, I think, rewarded our citizens well. With that, I'll move on to public comment. Is there any member of the public that would like to address this now under this? Very good. I see none. And Dot Miller, do you have a motion you'd like to make?
I do this time.
Just happened to have it right there in front of me?
Just happened to have it right with me. I move to appoint David Blaylock to the Gulf Advisory Committee for an unexpired term ending April 30th, 2020.
Motion's for an appointment to the Gulf Advisory Committee. All votes are cast. That passes six to zero with Mr. Jones being an excused absence. Any other council reports? Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to, tonight, note the passing of Royce Collier, kind of a prominent Arvada citizen throughout our history for a long time. We had the distinct pleasure of awarding a proclamation to Mr. Collier a few months ago, and he did pass away last week. Mr. Collier was, had some significant challenges in life, having been diagnosed with cerebral policy, palsy as a very young man, but made the best of it. Always had a smile on his face and was well-known for walking around Old Town, Arvada, selling light bulbs from a suitcase, and certainly one of Arvada's flavorful citizens, and, and he will certainly be missed, and, and I'll certainly cherish his memory of him walking around Old Town with a big smile on his face.
Thanks for telling us about that. Ms. Ford?
Well, I'd just like to encourage our citizens to participate in the Arvada Historical Society Garden Tour. It's one of their major fundraisers, and so it's benefiting, benefiting a good organization.
Yeah. Yeah, I've got a couple of things I want to report on. One is this coming Saturday and Sunday will be Sand in the City, a great event every year. Actually, I think Dot Miller helped bring this when she was head of the Chamber of Commerce, so I'm sure the Chamber Board thanks you for...
I'm not your committee member.
Yeah. It's a lot of work, but it's a great, great event, and I, I had the good fortune of being a judge for this every year. And it's going to be, this coming Saturday and Sunday at Arvada West High School, at the park right there by Arvada West High School. And, and new this year, in addition to some great booths and vendors and things, in addition to the sand carvings, will be a hula dancing competition, and they're going to try to break the world record. And there's some rumor that some guy is going to be wearing a grass skirt, and so I will be up there leading people on.
It's Mark.
Which Mark will do that?
The other one. The other Mark.
So, weather permitting, we're going to have that, and I believe that's Saturday afternoon. And then the other big event we've got, and I know that Mr. Marriott and I, both because it's in his district and myself because I'm a little bit crazy, we're going to help with the ceremonial cannonball into the new Fitzmore Swimming Pool, which replaces the old pool that we lost many years back there in Ralston Central Park. And I think I am very proud of what City Council has done in conjunction with the school district and the Apex District. Again, you know, being willing to work across different governmental lines and, and really bring a great, great asset to our community. So, come out Saturday at 10:00 AM, I believe it is, and we'll have a, some short speeches and some quick cannonballs. With that, Mr. Devon, can you top that?
No, I certainly cannot, and I won't even try. But I will tell you that our next workshop is actually scheduled on July 9th. We will begin at 4:00 PM with more discussion of bond reauthorization and possible capital projects. We'll take a, a short break, and then return at 6 o'clock for a update from Denver Water. And then we will also have, we, a discussion on communication and citizen engagement. You'll hear from our staff regarding how we're engaging our neighborhoods, how we're going to engage them in what was discussed earlier as the Visioning Project, and also our plans for a telephone town hall meeting that will occur on August the 8th. So all that will be discussed during the July 9th workshop.
Very good. Mr. Daly? Nothing from the city attorney, per usual. We stand adjourned. Thank you.